Hello, this is Christopher. Hey, Miss Elaine, how you doing today?
I'm very good, thank you. Yourself?
Very good, man, very good. You'll have to pardon my, pardon my background, Boulder Creek is out of electricity at the moment. And so I was unable to find a proper place, so we had to drive out in the truck for the, for the form today.
Oh, man.
Okay.
And so it turns out, infrastructure is important, isn't it?
Yes, it is. I've been worried all day what I was gonna do, Chris, if my, if Frontier Internet went down, so I'd have all kinds of backup plans.
I even, I've got Starlink in addition to paying for AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Comcast. And the Starlink is okay, but it's just, it's in and out. Everything else doesn't work once it powers out.
Yeah, I, I, I feel you. I understand.
Ah, yes. And so here we are in a parking lot in Scotts Valley. But, yeah, today, we're present, we're participating, right?
So it's 7:06, so I want to get started, because I want to be conscious of everyone's time. I know, I know all y'all are very, very busy. So I want to thank the candidates for coming this evening to share with the NAACP Santa Cruz County Branch, your thoughts and, and how, what, what you're gonna do, you know, if, if you end up becoming a supervisor, by responding to some questions that we had prepared. So my name's Elaine Johnson, I'm the president of the NAACP, and I believe I know everybody on this call.
I think it's the first time we've met.
Who said that?
Teresa.
Teresa, yeah, Teresa. I actually saw you in several forums already, but good to meet you again. I'm glad you're here. And so how the process is gonna work, we're gonna start with District Five first. And we're gonna have, we're gonna spend about, you know, fifty or so minutes. And each candidate will receive two questions, and you will get a certain amount of time to respond. And Amanda will, will share a little bit more about that with you when she asks you the questions. We ask you to, to, to be conscious of the time, Jane, which her window says NAACP, but that's Jane Scooby, who's amazing. She'll be keeping time, and she'll let you know when it's, when it's getting close to where you wrap up. If you don't understand a question, which we don't have many questions, just, just ask Amanda, and she'd be happy to repeat that for you. Anybody have any questions?
No, very straightforward.
Okay, perfect, perfect. So without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to Amanda. Well, Amanda's also our treasurer for the NAACP, Jane is our secretary, and they are both, I don't know what I'd do without them. They're amazing, 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 amazing team members. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Amanda.
Hello, welcome, everyone. So, yeah, we're gonna start with District Five. And I'm just gonna ask the first question, and we'll go through the list of candidates. So, I guess, because I see Chris in the first window, do you mind going first with the first question?
Not at all.
All right, wonderful. First question is, what steps will you take to enact the county's equity statement enacted on October 3, 2023? The statement reads, "Equity in action in Santa Cruz County is a transformative process that embraces individuals of every status, providing unwavering support, dignity, and compassion. Through this commitment, the county ensures intentional opportunities and access, fostering an environment where everyone can thrive and belong." And you have two minutes, I believe, to answer this.
Oh, that's a lot of time, fantastic. Well, it probably won't take me that long to answer this, it's very straightforward. I think the key word there is "action," right? It's about what we do when we're in position. And I plan on living that statement, you know, it's not enough to talk about it, it's not enough to say pretty words. You know, you have to implement policies in your administration and in, in your, in your, your work in government that reflects that equity policy. You know, so we're giving people opportunities. We're, we're, we're being broad-minded and doing, doing the research that we need to do to, to identify, you know, who might be falling through the cracks, and making sure that those persons are properly represented. And that's how I plan on doing it, you know, by being conscientious, gathering good data and information, and acting on it in support of that statement. And that's all.
Wonderful, thank you. And I accidentally messed up, and I was supposed to give you a two-minute time to, and give yourself an intro. So I apologize about that. I was just asked to do this, like, right before the meeting, so I'm, like, trying to quick read everything. So if you don't mind, yeah.
Not, not at all.
Reading your intro.
It did seem like a long time for that, that one question. All right, so two minutes to talk about myself. My name's Christopher Bradford. I am a small business owner, I'm a treasurer on the Board of Directors for the Fire Safety Council, I'm a software engineer. Most importantly, I'm a father and a husband, and a person who lives in Boulder Creek and loves where he lives. I've, I've, I've been a professional here in the Santa Cruz area for a good amount of time, and in California for much longer. And I've directly experienced situations where an equity statement like the one Santa Cruz is implementing would have netted positive results for myself. You know, I've been in situations where, you know, I'm told I'm not a cultural fit despite fitting, you know, despite meeting all the requirements for a position or for a promotion. And, and it's painful when that happens, and there's a real financial and, and mental health impact, you know, that people experience when, when they don't have that kind of supportive structure built into government. You know, so that's something that's important to me as well. I want to make sure that everyone gets a fair shot. And, yeah, that's, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Next, I will pick Teresa to go, if you want to give yourself an intro. And then we'll, I guess, come back to the questions. I apologize if I've messed up the order here.
No worries. Let's see, I am a mountain mom, I've lived here nineteen years, raised two young adults. I have been elected twice to my elementary's Board of Education consecutively, and now I'm on the Los Gatos Saratoga High School Board of Education. I have jurisdiction, multi-county, Santa Cruz, and Santa Clara. Through my work, I also, my previous life was an engineer and a director of engineering in high tech, so I have decades of experience working in the Silicon Valley. What you should know about me today is, I sit on three committees that are actually multi-county, state, federal. The first committee I sit on is the Legislative, Legislative Action Committee. And I travel to Washington DC and our state capital, and I meet with all of our elected officials on education issues. Housing for teachers, wages for teachers, well, you name it, we, we go about it, and we try to advocate. Multi-county as well, but last year in Washington, I sat with Monterey and the Superintendent of San Lorenzo Valley, and we spoke to them about how many day instructional hours our kids are losing, because when we have power outages, they can't go to school sometimes. So those type of things I want you to know. I, I cross over, so I have some very good experience in governing. I know what it's like to work on a five-person board, your one person, and getting policy through. Things that you might not know about me is I, I was on the Silicon Valley Education Foundation Bold Conversations series. I also, one of, my high school was one of the first to put ethnic studies in place. And I am a, a, a big fan of the work, and my generation was a direct benefit, even though the pigment of my skin is white, I benefited from the work that Pauline Murray and Ruth Bader Ginsburg did to put equality in place.
You're at time, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. And we'll come back to the question, thank you so much.
Okay.
So next, if Monica can give her intro, please?
Thank you, thank you, Amanda, and thank you, NAACP for hosting this today, it's really important. So my name's Monica Martinez, I'm running for Fifth District Supervisor. I've been a public servant my entire life. It runs in my family. My mom, who's actually visiting this week, is a retired elementary school teacher. My dad's a retired fire captain, and growing up, I knew the value of making a difference in my community. However, to be honest, I never thought that I would someday run for office. And that's because I'm originally from Bakersfield, and just as a queer Latinx woman, I never really considered myself to be electable. So I dedicated my life to public service in a different way, giving a voice to people who've been left behind. Women, people experiencing homelessness, foster youth, and people on the economic margins. And this is the work that brought me to San Cruz County. Today, I'm the CEO of Encompass Community Services, our county's largest health and human services nonprofit. And for over a decade, I've used public funding to navigate some of the most complex challenges facing our community. And I'm really proud of some of the work that we've accomplished over the last decade. I've worked to expand mental health and substance use options for families in areas with greatest health disparity, places like the San Lorenzo Valley and Watsonville. I launched the first-ever racial equity work group, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And I helped lead a healthcare organization through the pandemic, which is something nobody's really has done before, right? I'm also a resident of Felton, and I'm the mom of two kids that attend SLV Elementary. And I've experienced firsthand the challenges of living here in the unincorporated San Lorenzo Valley. And I'm gonna bring that experience to the role. I'm the only candidate who's been endorsed by the California Democratic Party, multiple labor organizations, Planned Parenthood, Santa Cruz YMB, and numerous countywide leaders. And I'm running for Fifth District Supervisor for the same reason I went into public service twenty years ago, to give voice to Fifth District residents who've fallen through the many cracks in our public system. And I'm ready to use my deep experience to serve my community and Santa Cruz County. Thank you.
Thank you, you were just on time. Next up, we'll have our final intro by Tom. Is he here?
I'm not saying that he is, yeah.
Yeah, not seeing him either.
Maybe Ben Lowman's out, too.
I know Felton is. Okay. Well, if he comes on later, maybe we can circle back to him. So I'm gonna go through question one, which, oh, we already had Chris answer. So I will bring Teresa back, if she would like to answer the first question, and I can read that again. Okay, welcome back. Yeah, so the question is, what steps would you take to enact the county's equity statement enacted on October 3, 2023? Statement reads, "Equity in action in Santa Cruz County is a transformative process that embraces individuals of every status, providing unwavering support, dignity, and compassion. Through this commitment, the county ensures intentional opportunities and access, fostering an environment where everyone can thrive and belong." And you have two minutes for this question, and Jane will be the timekeeper again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is a question that I've dealt with from a school board standpoint as well. Is, I am a firm believer in blind hiring. If you don't know what that is, blind hiring is where you take the name off, you put any identifying factors off the application, and you look at the skill set, you look at their experience. And that is what is evaluated for them to get the interview. And that alone brings you a pool of people in that maybe would not have been considered. I can say, sitting on, on a school board, when we have worked with professional recruiters to bring in a new superintendent, and I've done this several times, you know, many times where they went to school matters, not what degree they got, or what they were doing while they were earning that degree. So this process works, and it, it actually changes the culture also within human resources and the hiring folks, is, it levels the playing ground. And it actually results in a more equitable situation on who gets an interview and ultimately who gets the job. So that would be one of the, the very first things that I would work with my fellow supervisors, because I can't do this alone. You're one supervisor on a board, and it means that you have to work with them, bring your ideas, and see if they will also agree to trying something new. And that is not always easy to do that. But that is one of the first things I would do. I also would make sure that we celebrate every opportunity that we have to celebrate each other's identity. I think it's really important, and that's something that we have tried and put in place at our schools. And it wasn't easy. We often ran into some ma, big obstacles and, you know, some dissent that folks did not want to do it. But you can get it in place if you work hard. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, I appreciate it. And if we can have Monica back.
Thank you.
Yes, do you want me to read the question again?
Thank you, I appreciate that, I got it. I want to start off just by congratulating everybody who was a part of bringing forward the equity statement on October 3. I know that you guys were involved, and it was many months and years in the making, and even kind of a hard-fought Board of Supervisor meeting with a lot of difficult public comments. So thank you to everybody who fought through that and had the courage to bring this forward. I think the best way to demonstrate what I would do as a county supervisor to move the statement forward is really through my work at Encompass, because at Encompass, equity is not a buzzword, it's an action. And since joining Encompass, I've led an organizational transformation to center equity in all of our work, including bringing forward a new mission and vision statement for the organization. In 2020, we launched a racial equity work group who focuses, focused on advancing racial equity in our organization, which is a really tough conversation to have internally, you know, we're a fifty-year-old organization, we have a lot of history. And so we really had to push through all, a lot of that, and that work has expanded to include all DEI efforts and not just racial justice now. We put our budget behind our decisions and behind our values. We hired a full-time DEI manager, and I think that we need to look at some DEI staffing for the county if we really want to move the culture of our county systems. We've worked to advance our workplace and workforce policies. I kind of feel a little bit differently than the candidate who just spoke. I mean, I want to really look at the lived experience that our candidates are bringing, and we've reduced some of the criteria of certain positions to make sure that folks who maybe didn't have access to certain education or certain licensing, we're still able to do the good work that we do. We've really invested in leadership development and mentoring, and I'd like to help advance people of color within county leadership and provide mentoring opportunities for people to learn on their job. And again, as a supervisor, my job is to make sure that the county budget matches the value. So if the, if the value is this equity statement, which I'm glad to see that it is, then we've got to make sure that the budget is behind that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to stick around and answer the next question? We'll just kind of go in reverse order. Is that okay?
Why not? You want to read it?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay. Second question, should you be elected supervisor? How would you operationalize the county's declaration that racism is a public health crisis, and what would that look like to you?
Yeah, you know, in this county, we saw firsthand what the statement "racism is a public health crisis" means during the 2020 COVID-19 pandemic. We saw that immediately, the communities that, communities of color, particularly communities in South County, had higher rates of COVID and higher death rates, and weren't getting access to the same type of PPE and vaccines when they came. And our county really had to organize around that and look at the health data and look at the health disparities, and did a very intentional effort to move resources to South County. Then what we saw was that in certain parts of North County, particularly the San Lorenzo Valley, we were having higher rates after vaccines had rolled out, and that's because our vaccine rates were low. And so I helped to lead something called Boulder Creek Vaccine Boost to get pop-up clinics into parts of the San Lorenzo Valley that weren't having access to, to vaccines, because people don't travel for that kind of thing from upper parts of the San Lorenzo Valley. And so that's an example of really actualizing public health as, or the fact that racism is a public health crisis and using data to make improvements. And there's a lot of places that we can do that in the county system. I take a health-in-all policies approach, which is a belief that every decision the county makes, every policy impacts overall health outcomes. So I think we can look at the criminal justice system and do assessments about who's in the jail, and what can we do differently to make sure that we're reducing the disparities within the jail. I want to look at environmental climate justice and impacts of climate change, which predominantly hits lower-income communities like the San Lorenzo Valley or people near the flooding in the Baharo Valley. I want to look at the use of pesticides in our community to make sure that we're not making decisions that impact public health. And the county has, has a say in this. The Board of Supervisors can bring forth, forth policies to improve the overall health of our community. And I definitely take a data-informed approach, because the, the data shows where the health outcomes lie and which communities are more heavily impacted. And we have some significant disparities that I've been working to address for the last decade and plan to continue to address if I lucked into the supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you. And it looks like that we have lost Chris. I don't know if he's been able to rejoin. I saw him try a few times. So we'll try and get him, oh, you're back. You're on there. Okay, wonderful. Would you like to answer the second question?
I'd love to hear what it is, and then...
Yes. Okay. Should you be elected supervisor? How would you operationalize the county's declaration that racism is a public health crisis, and what would that look like?
Okay, so I spoke a little bit about it when I, when I gave my intro today. But I've directly experienced the public health impacts of racism, what it can do to a person and by extension their family. You know, it's like throwing a pebble in the pond, right? There are ripples that go out further and further. For myself, losing opportunities meant less income for my family, fewer opportunities for my children, even more stress for myself, which is negative health impacts. All that, all that adds up. And so actualizing the policy in such a way that, one, we're aware of what's happening in our communities, right? So we have to start with connection, we have to start with being present in our communities, you know, and running a transparent office where people feel comfortable expressing what they're experiencing. You know, oftentimes, when I experienced this stuff myself, I didn't, I didn't even get to the spot where I would bring it up and try to address it, because I felt there was no one on the other end to hear what I was saying. You know, so I will be that ear on the other end, where people can be comfortable. They can come and say, this is what I'm experiencing, you know, in our school system. This is what I'm experiencing, you know, as, as a small business owner, you know. This is what I'm experiencing as a person just living in our communities. And create an opportunity for them to find solutions. So it's very important that, one, we move forward carefully, right? We listen to people, we create policy that reflects that equity statement, but is also aware that each individual community is probably gonna have a different solution for different problems, because we're a very diverse population, not just ethnically, but socio-economically and politically, right? So that kind of awareness is going to be extremely important, and that's why I plan on moving forward and implementing that.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
And we'll go back to Teresa to answer that question, and I'll read it one more time. And then we'll take a few questions from the audience, and I'm not sure if we're gonna have audience members ask directly, or if I will read the questions, so point of clarification on that. And Teresa, I'll read the question one more time for you. Should you be elected, yeah, should you be elected supervisor? How would you operationalize the county's declaration that racism is a public health crisis, and what would that look like?
Thank you. I want, want to pick up on what Monica said. During COVID-19, I was in three meetings a day. As an elected official, you were in meetings that went all the way to the state level. During my noon hour, I was in a meeting with the County Board of Education on what the next steps would be on the next day. And I was one of the first people trained as a contact tracer case investigator at, from John Hopkins, learning what the virus was. So I had a very different experience than many people did, and then walking into a board meeting where very difficult decisions had to be made, as we learned more every day with mitigations and putting them in place, things we'd never done before. Children aged twelve, because it was a communicable disease, I would speak to on the phone, informing them of their test result, and they would tell me their children, their parents were sick in the other room, and they were taking care of them. So I just want to make clear that from, from my experience, I've seen all three levels, and I definitely will be looking at the data. I worked in the, the state database, collecting the data for COVID. I absolutely knew where an outbreak was going on and what we were putting in place, and all of the services that we have statewide, which were wonderful, but needed to be in the right places. Definitely, we saw families who did not get the opportunities that other people did, and that data is, is accessible. So what I would do as supervisor is I would be checking that data, and I would be checking it often. I would task my staff to go out and get that data, because only when you are looking at it on a regular basis and monitoring, do you have the opportunity to take action to change it, and it exists. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I think we're gonna move on to audience questions now. And if you can, please place those in the chat, and I will ask the questions of each of the candidates, if there are questions. Give you all a minute or two to type your questions in the chat. Any audience questions?
I'm a super slow typer, I'm sorry. So I'm working on it.
Thank you, Leslie. I know you'll ask a good one. Didn't give that much time on this.
Yeah, and Leslie, feel free to just share your question. While the other ones are coming, feel free to just, it's fine for you to just speak it.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I was, I was thinking about, you know, the recent, the grand jury report, 2023, on the jails and on the, the Behavioral Health Division, and the recommendations they're making, looking at the underfunding, the drastically severe underfunding and understaffed Behavioral Health Division, and how that would impact how we want to think about what we can do before we even think about building a new jail. And what are the possibilities that are, you know, really in the community to serve people in the community rather than warehousing people with mental health issues in the jail? And also, the recent Criminal Justice Council report just came out, and that really went through all the different areas of the courts and, you know, the parole and all the different pieces, and they came up with, you know, just a lot of understanding of how underfunded things are in the community and what can be done, and what we need to do that can reduce jail populations and really prevent us from thinking about building a new jail for $200 million that can be spent in the community. So I just wanted to see where folks stand on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure that I captured all of that, so I think you're wanting a response back about the grand jury report and building the new jail, and the new criminal justice report that just came out, just kind of tying those things together? Am I kind of characterizing that correctly?
Looking at the information and data that shows us how underfunded and areas that where there's so many gaps in terms of services that link people up, you know, even that cause, you know, are factors in recidivism, so that like anti-recidivism programs haven't been given, been given long enough to work yet to see impacts that we could be having from them. So I'm saying, with all that information coming down the pike, where do folks stand on the, the idea, even just the idea of proposing a new jail? where do folks stand on the the idea, even just the idea of proposing a new jail?
Okay.
Does that, did that clarify a a little bit? I'm sorry, I didn't have it really.
That works.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Amanda, so if you want to invite um someone to to lead off by responding, maybe Monica and Golden Chris, that'd be great. Just want to be conscious of the time. We have quite a few questions came in into the chat. Which is great.
Um, okay. Monica, do you want to start us off on that question?
Sure. Um, it's a huge question, Leslie, so thank you for it. Um, is my, in my role at Encompass, I'm definitely familiar with so many of these challenges. Um, and I sat on the criminal justice, I sit on the criminal justice council and I sat on the ad hoc committee that created this report in the last two years worth of reports. Um, so I'm very, so, so what it basically says is that we need to find alternatives to incarceration, particularly for people who are experiencing mental health challenges or substance use disorders, right? Uh, we are law enforcement officers, went into the career for public safety, to serve our community, not to be social workers. Um, and they're not the right people to be social workers, serving people who are very vulnerable. And the jail's not the right place to treat people who have substance use issues or mental health conditions. Um, I think we can all agree that the current conditions in the jail are inhumane and not adequate. And I have deep concerns about that and uh, but I'm not pointing fingers, right? I don't have, I don't have a person to blame because we do have limited resources. And so we need to be working together as a collaborative to go upstream, get people out of incarceration um and to provide people with the affordable housing or the permanent supportive housing and treatment options um that they deserve. And there are some really um cool things happening with Medi-Cal reform that are going to allow us to expand what's eligible for Medi-Cal so we can serve people with greater treatment options. But there's also some unfunded mandates coming down that our county's going to have to respond to in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, like care courts. Um, like this thing related to people who are incompetent to stand trial. Um, they're going to be served here in our local county jail and not in the state hospitals. And that's going to come into effect in the next eighteen months. So as a system and as supervisors, we're going to really need to think about how we prioritize our funds. And I certainly come from the the lens that treatment is better. Uh, we need to move upstream. We need to support the people who are most vulnerable. We're not going to incarcerate our way out of these, this public health crisis that we're having related to substance use disorder and homelessness. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we can have um Christopher up next to answer the same question from Leslie?
Certainly, and that's an excellent question. Thank you for asking it, Leslie. I think we have to keep in mind particularly that our criminal justice system is supposed to be rehabilitative. It's not supposed to be purely punitive, right? We're not supposed to be sending people in there just to suffer. And but that's not the case. That's not what's happening. And recidivism rates being high are directly related to lack of opportunity uh economically and otherwise. And so all these, these issues are downstream of each other. I spent a lot of time uh this last month uh, meeting with folks who are psychologists and folks who are um counselors, uh, two of which who work for the county. Spent a lot of, a lot of time there. And they talked to me directly about how, how the resources there are deeply lacking and how we've been using jail as an extension of our mental health treatment, you know, as opposed to having resources for people to be escalated to uh when they are in crisis. You know, so I am, I'm a firm believer that we need to direct more resources there. We need to have options uh beyond, beyond jail for people that are in crisis. Uh, we need to be able to send them to counselors who are experienced, who know what they're doing uh and who can give people, um, you know, the time they need, the space they need, uh, whether it's in hospital or otherwise, getting direct care. Uh, so that they don't have to go to jail for something that is a mental health crisis. Um, I think that's what we need to uh lean into in the county. And of course, we have uh resource issues. There's no getting around it. Uh, but I wasn't the first person to say it. Uh, you know, where you direct your money shows where your priorities lie, right? And building giant prisons uh instead of care facilities or investing in uh mental health and prevention shows exactly where uh the persons who constructed that budget uh think it should be directed. And so uh, I know the jail uh that we do have isn't ideal, right? It needs improvement, but that's a lot of money that we're spending on more incarceration. We should be spending a ton more on prevention, on opportunity and on mental health care in my opinion. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you so much. Um, and if we can have um Teresa up to answer the question as well?
Thank you. Um, I mean, basically, we need a mental health facility. Um, when you look at the folks that are homeless, I mean, one of the things that has hit me recently is just how many wheelchairs you see. So that it's a combination of all types of things happening. But we used to have residential facilities that work for uh wellness and mental health. We used to have a a residential facility for youth in Salinas. We don't have that anymore. So in fact, some kids in my district, we send out of state. It's cheaper to give them an education and a residential facility for their needs out of state than for them to stay here where their families and their friends are that can support them. So I really do believe that when we look at investment, we know that care courts coming, it's unmandated, that we need to look at how we develop facilities to take care of these people. And um it just breaks my heart. I worked in a mental health ward when I was in high school. And I, I know what it looks like and I know what care looks like that they should be receiving. And those same people are on the streets that we live in. And it it shames me. It shames me personally to see that we are allowing it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to go to the first question in the chat from Joy. Um, and Teresa, if you want to stay on, we'll just kind of go in reverse order, I guess. Um, I'll ask the question.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, how will you work with CARESJ to support this work? So this work, I assume as supervisor?
Um, honestly, I don't know what CARESJ means. I could try it, try and fake it, but I don't know what what that means. Can somebody add a definition?
Um, I am feeling flat footed here too and am not recalling for some reason. I know I know what it is. I apologize. I don't know if Joy is here or if somebody can.
Definition, please?
It's, it's a, a county program. Anybody? Can anybody clarify that at all? Like CARESJ?
Sorry, could we come back?
And I feel like I know a lot of most county activities I've never heard about. So maybe, maybe it was a typo.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna move to the next question then if we're not sure um what the acronym is. Okay.
I think that, yeah, that was part of the um, the DEI work group. They call themselves the CARESJ.
And and um, could you?
But that's, but we can, let's move on.
Thank you.
Oh, here we go. A circle on anti-racism, economic and social justice. So working with that group to continue their work and effort in creating um the equity statement that was part of the first question. Does that make sense? So I guess continuing to support that as uh an entity and a group that's doing this sort of work.
Yeah, I would, I would love to meet with them. Um, I, I have done that type of work in Santa Clara County and um I developed programs working with kids. My gosh, I've seen kids, does their hearts break? I had a social justice group that they had done this beautiful piece of art and their principal would not let them put it up after they had completed it. And the excuse that was given was um, we'll let you put it up temporarily, but we won't let you put it up permanently. And the, and these kids, the social justice group, they came back and they said, we won't accept that. We want it up permanently like you agreed to. So I would welcome working with you and seeing what we can do in the community and not allowing it to die. Once, a lot of times when a resolution is made, it it's done. I believe in bringing it back annually and uh, and again, uh, celebrating the work that you've done and showing the progress and the actions that took place over the year. Um, it's really important to me to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, if we could have uh Christopher answer the same question?
Yeah, certainly. I think um.
Go ahead.
I, I think the most important thing is ensuring that they still have a seat at the table. A lot of times, uh, you know, when people gather, they organize to give these kind of, these kind of documents and changes and policy. Uh, the, the amount of access you have to government, to, to power, you know, to people, uh, depends on the person who's in the seat and whether see good, good things die on the vine, you know, because of a, a change in the person, you know, in a given seat, depending on what's happening. And uh, that, that wouldn't happen with me. I think the work that they're doing is important. I think uh, we've got to it's like, to be passionate in the right thing for folks, uh, social justice around uh economic issues and DEI. And we gotta let them have a seat at the table and make sure that those voices are being heard. Uh, so yeah, um, I would address, uh, I would support them by, by, by working to implement the policy that they were putting in place. And an open seat at the table where they can continue doing the good work is what I would have to offer.
Thank you. And Monica, would you like to answer the question?
I appreciate that. And thanks, Kristen, for putting that in the chat. Um, I really want to, as supervisor, approach these type of community bodies and circles or commissions or whatever you want to call them with a really level playing field. Um, I think that we often put people in a power sort of up here. And what I want to bring to the office is a sense that we're all part of the same community and no one is better than anybody else. And I think that um, when I watched the board presentation, you know, that was the spirit that I saw from the folks who did the work to come forward with equity statement was this idea that, you know, we're all in this together and that we need to create space for everybody, for everybody's voice. And so I plan to be accessible and transparent and authentic um, and to really bring a sense of curiosity when meeting with the script. I mean, I, I intend, absolutely intend to continue to meet with them or in whatever figure that they change or the, the shape they changed moving forward. Um, so I can understand their voices and to really be humble um as it relates to the improvements that the county needs to make because I think we all know they're there. There is huge structural racism within the county, huge structural racism within our, our systems and to um help bring their voice to advance the change that we all know we need. Because like um I said previously, um, it's not enough just to pass an equity statement, but now, you know, we have to be accountable to it. Um, and that's what I loved about the fact that the county passed this is that now we are all accountable. And I see that group and many, 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 many other people as those who are to hold us accountable for the change that that is possible and the change that's long overdue here in Santa Cruz County.
Thank you. And would you like to stay uh spotlight so I can read you the next question? Um, it's in the chat. And this one is from Jane. This one is very uh timely. And I think we've kind of touched on a little bit. How would you assist your community with storm preparation and recovery as we face more intense storms? It feels like it's just getting worse each year. And to me, I was talking to a friend in San Diego um today about it and it just feels like we're kind of reinventing things each year. And as a person who also lives in District Five, um, yeah, how would you address this as supervisor?
Thanks, Amanda. And you're not wrong with what you just shared. Um, so the way that I, I'm also like you, thinking about this a lot. You know, my power just went on like two hours ago, but why would it be on here? Um, you know, disasters aren't what they used to be in this county. It used to be that disasters, that we'd use the word disaster like once or twice a decade, right? Love Creek, the earthquake. And we in this county have had seven federally declared disasters in the last six years. Okay, so if you're feeling like there's a lot, it's because it is true. Um, and that's the impact of climate change, all the, and you know, climate work that we're trying to do together to combat the, you know, a lot of work to do. But what that tells me is that we need to take a much more systemic approach to our preparedness and to our recovery because we can't keep reinventing the wheel. Um, one of the things that I advocated for in the time period between the twenty twenty-three storms and the twenty twenty-four storms was to actually create a standing MOU between the CBOs and the county. Because what was happening is we'd have a storm and then it's like, all right, who has staff today to come out and fill sandbags? Or to come out and provide mental health therapists at the uh refuge, at the shelters, right? Um, we need to have those things standing. Um, and that's just the, the tip of the air or the tip of the iceberg as far as um, all the work that we need to do in our infrastructure. We need to be looking at our office, their o- office, the OE three office um, as a source to do a lot more um infrastructure improvements. We need to have plans. Um, and it's a, and it needs to be a three sixty-five year effort, not just in the winters, preparing for winter storms. Um, there's something from the county, the governor's budget called a resili- resiliency center that our county can apply for and hopefully bring funds in to help have a, you know, all year round approach that um prepares us for future disasters because these aren't going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to invite Christopher up to answer the question. I can reread it as well.
Okay, could you rewrite?
Yes. Uh, in your role as supervisor, how would you assist your community with storm preparation and recovery as we face more intense storms uh each year?
Okay, so storm recovery, disaster preparedness is something I've deeply involved in for years now. Uh, again, I'm on the uh, the board of directors for the Fire Safety Council of Santa Cruz County. And I've been actively gathering resources and providing resources for people that's coming. Because we know it's not an if anymore, right? We know it's just a matter of when. And we have to stop being reactive, being proactive. That means cultivating a culture of disaster preparedness. You know, it's not enough, you know, to uh, to, to get very excited after the disaster and then go back to living our normal lives. We have to change the way we approach uh dealing with disasters. Um, and practically, that means more than just uh, than just nice words. We get out there and do work. And that means doing a lot of grant writing, right? Accessing federal grants and discovering where we can find funding uh for nonprofits and other organizations that can take that funding and put it to work on the ground, creating real change. Um, you know, one of the programs I have uh in my nonprofit, the Fire Safety Council, uh, is Carshbusters, you know, and it's an opportunity for folks who may be elderly or who may be uh differently able to have someone come out and cut down the brush for them. We have a chipping program that we work with, with the RCD, that'll come out and chip the wood, you know? There are, there are tools that are already being put in place to help people. And as a supervisor, I'll be able to, to folks what those tools are. Uh, I'll be able to be the mercury in between, um, you know, the nonprofits that can do a lot and can do a lot more than the county can in some areas, you know, and the people who need the help. Right now, that's what we're lacking. You know, the county, um, there are some programs already in place that can help people. But folks need to know that uh we have to cultivate this culture because it is more important um uh than recovery, right? Prevention is less expensive and there's much less heartache, which I know personally, you know, and uh this is a kind of environmentalism. You know, this, this, this protection and preparation for disasters is make, it'll make us integrate fully into the area where we live and take responsibility, um, you know, for our homes. And you'll, you know, after a CZU fire, uh, you've got within forty homes rebuilt out of nine hundred and eleven. So even if you are insured, chances are you're not going to rebuild your home if you lose it, you know, speaking to fire. Um, and it's probably the same for flood and for a number of other disasters that occur. Uh, so that little bit of prevention, that, that, that hard work and that money spent, um, it's, it's a lot less than what you have on the other end if you're not prepared. And the county can do a lot more to make people aware of what tools are available. And uh, you know, to go out there and get that grant money and make sure we make these changes in our neighborhood. I believe that we need to.
I think you're on time.
And have a measured point. Now I'm at time. Okay.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate what you said about helping um elderly folks as well. I have a friend up in Zianti and last year uh, didn't have power for a number of weeks and had a tree fall on her driveway and then couldn't go out and get gas. So she had to get somebody to come and cut the tree down and her generator ran out, you know, so it's, it's a whole cycle thing. So yeah, I appreciate that perspective. And I'd like to invite um Teresa up to uh also answer the question. And then um, once we're done with this round, we will do our summaries and we are just a little bit over time starting uh on the next race. So thank you. If you, I can uh read you the question again.
Oh, it's fine. I, I can just jump in.
Okay, go for it.
Um, boy, I live on the summit.
Boy, I live on the summit and my gosh, we have it all. We were snowbound last year about this time. We were snowbound, running out of propane for generators, running out of gas for generators. Um, and snowman, I want to say is we not only had eight inches of snow, which we could have handled, but it was the huge trees that came down. So it wasn't the tools that we have that we as a community work together every day to clear trees that fall down. We needed the professional, high-grade equipment to come in. So getting prepared for this, it is our way of life. I feel today I live off the grid. I have backup, backup, backup. My kids, just to turn in their homework, have two or three different plans on where we could go if this, you know, if we don't have power, we don't have internet, we gotta do this. It's a way of life that I live and my neighbors live right now. And an education system needs to go into place, very similar to what we have for fire wise. Chris, you know, you're, you're absolutely spot on on everything that you're saying there. Uh, one of the things that I definitely want to do is work with water. Um, we need to be storing all this water, right? This is something that we, water is precious to us. So rebuilding for resilience, getting programs in place and communicating, doing a complete campaign on this, because um, uh, this is our new normal. We're here. This is the second, uh, the CZU fires was the second that from my area had had in three years. Um, you know, the loss of homeowners insurance, um, the elderly who will not even try to apply for any of the assistance that's there, because they're afraid that, that our county planning will come out, reassess their property, and then they won't be able to afford to live here. So it's a trickle down effect that's happening that we have to get preparedness in place. We need to make sure that it's a priority. And, um, and that definitely it is, it is how we live today, whether you're on the coast and your, your home has been flooded. Um, rebuilding, we need new rules, then plays
You're at time.
Using materials that will last. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so now we'll do a summary for each candidate and, um, I'll go ahead and start with, uh, Christopher. You have a two minutes to do a summary. Did we lose him again? I don't have the participants up.
It looks like, uh, he's not online at the moment.
So maybe we can
He's, yeah.
Well, maybe we'll just circle back to, um, Teresa again to, to do hers and then we'll let Christopher get a minute to kind of resettle. If that's okay. Sorry for the bounce around.
Okay. And, uh, it's just an ending summary. It's not to a question?
Correct. Yeah. It's just a two-minute summary. Yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Well, uh, thank you. Um, you know, I'm applying for this job. I want to do this work. I've worked in, um, in an official capacity for many years. Um, uh, I understand the needs of our citizens. I'm not a politician. I don't want to be a politician, uh, but I want to make sure that the funds that we collect from the taxpayers are prioritized for things that are affecting all of us. One thing I, in all of these forums that I have participated in, there hasn't been one person running for office that has not had questions about ropes. Every single one of us has been inundated wherever we live. So, you know, these are things that I want to make sure that, um, you know, we make, we make the right decisions on the funding that we have and we understand the priorities that go along with them and plan for the future. Because other counties do have some really dynamite plans on getting prepared for the future. They partner with their providers. I'd rather see a provider treated more as a supplier, like you do in private business in the Silicon Valley. You come up with a set of goals and desired outcomes. And when performance isn't met, then there are concessions and there are investments, um, in the community to make up for it on their dime, not on the taxpayer's dime. So, um, I, I hope to be able to bring those type of things, uh, to the office. I am not a legacy. I have lived in California since nineteen eighty-six, lived here for nineteen years. And, um, I think I, that, um, you know, it is up to the voters. They need to choose who they want to do the job. And you have four very good candidates. I'm thrilled. I am thrilled that democracy is happening. And we have a real race, uh, for this position. And it's just not, you know, it's just not a party, uh, candidate. It, you have a choice. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Christopher, are you back on? Are you stable? Thank you so much for bearing with the, your signal issue. I'm sorry you're having so much trouble. If you would like to give a two-minute summary for us, um, just a little something to leave us with.
Certainly, certainly. Um, so this, uh, this election is extremely important. A lot of the issues that we're facing directly, uh, as, as the group, the NAACP and as persons, uh, for whom, uh, this sort of, uh, justice and correct approach is important. A lot of them are downstream from each other. Issues like transparency, issues like access, uh, issues like preparedness. These are all things that impact us, uh, in different ways depending on, you know, oftentimes our socioeconomic status. Um, and our ethnicity ends up playing a role as well. Um, so it's important, I think, moving forward, uh, that we make choices that are good for everyone and lift all boats. And we can only do that if we have great information and if we're connected to our communities. Uh, you know, so I've been a community organizer for years and years now, actively part of the Board of Directors for a, a large nonprofit and a, a business owner and an engineer. And in all of these roles, I've had the opportunity, uh, you know, to not only create opportunity for folks, but to live these ideals, um, in practice. And that's something I plan on continuing to do as the fifth district supervisor. Um, I think we're tired of representation, um, that is far away and not accessible. Uh, you know, we're tired of, uh, structure that makes it difficult for working families, you know, to, to engage. Uh, I, I'll never forget, while fighting for, um, uh, fighting, fighting for clean water for my, my community, uh, there was a meeting with the water board scheduled and we're in Boulder Creek. They scheduled a meeting with the water board on a Tuesday at nine thirty AM in Watsonville. You know, for working folks, that's not something you can just do, you know, and it makes it so that the participating in government was more difficult. And I want to remove those barriers. And I want to get those barriers out of the way and create a government, uh, that is present and accessible and personal, uh, so that we can all be accountable and we can have results for the people in the fifth district. Yeah. So that's what's important to me. And, uh, I think I'm close to my two minutes. So I'll wrap it up. I thank you very much for the opportunity. It's great connecting with you all.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. And Monica, if you'd like to come up and give your two-minute summary?
First of all, I want to thank you once again for having me today. It's a really important conversation. So I'm glad that all of you are taking time tonight to be here. You know, our county is facing some, a really tough time, you know? We've got huge challenges as it relates to disaster preparedness and prevention. You know, we've got budget constraints. Um, we have a lot of unfunded mandates coming and we, you know, what you are all very familiar with, we have some longstanding inequities that have been built into our systems for a very, very long time. And so what we need is courage and somebody who's ready to challenge the status quo. And my entire career, I've been that person who's pushing against the status quo to serve my community and to, um, improve the health and wellness of my community. Uh, when I moved to, to this county, I, you know, we were a county that really focused only on sheltering people experiencing homelessness. And I pushed towards housing first. And that was controversial, you know, fourteen years ago, believe it or not. And, um, had a lot of people tell me that's not the way things get done around here. Um, but we, I pushed with courage, um, against the resistance and we were able to make really big changes. And with a big sort of structural inequities that are occurring today and the urgency of the needs in the fifth district and across the county, we need somebody who's going to be prepared to, to push and be courageous, um, and, and authentic. And I have the experience to do that, because, um, I've been doing that throughout my entire career. So I hope that I can earn your support. Um, I hope that you'll engage through this election. You already are. Um, you know, ballots should be mailed today. So they're right around the corner, be in your mailbox. Election day is just a month away. So I hope to earn your support and I hope that we can bring real change to our county. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Monica. And thank you so much to all three of the fifth district supervisor candidates that joined us this evening. Um, we appreciate your time and effort. Um, and thank you so much for being here with us. And, um, this is being recorded and will be on our YouTube channel. Uh, so I'd like to take a moment to switch over now to District Two.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
And, uh, I'm sure we, you all should be able to connect with their campaigns. If you have more specific questions, um, you can re, go to their websites. Uh, I don't think we have that information ready, but if y'all want to pop it in the chat, feel free to do so. Um, if we have four candidates for District Two, uh, we have Kristen, Kim, Bruce and David. Um, so what we'll do now, do it correctly, is we'll have a two-minute intro. We'll do through the list, uh, two-minute intro for each candidate. Um, introduce yourself and, um, let's see. So we'll start with, uh, Kristen first. If you'd like to go. Welcome, Kristen.
Hi, thank you so much. Uh, yes. Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for the opportunity, uh, to connect with you all this evening. I really appreciate it. My name is Kristen Brown. I'm currently serving as mayor in my eighth year of my second term on Capitol City Council and, uh, seeking to be the representative for the second district on the Board of Supervisors. I am a fourth generation Santa Cruz County resident from a family with a legacy of public service. I have thirteen years of experience in public policy, having worked in government, nonprofit and community organizations, including time, uh, as a congressional aide for five years for Congressman Sam Farr and a year with Congressman Jimmy Panetta. I serve as the vice, vice chair and incoming twenty twenty-four chair of the Santa Cruz Metro Transit District and the Chair of the Regional Transportation Commission. I was a board member and board president in twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty-two of Ambag. And I led the, the board through the regional housing needs assessment process, uh, during my term as president. I've served as the treasurer for the Community Action Board for the past nine years and spent two years on the Criminal Justice Council. I have a total of four college degrees culminating a master's degree in public administration with an emphasis in public sector management and leadership. And I'm proud of my accomplishments in my time as a council member. I added youth voices to our city boards and commissions enacted mobile home rent stabilization, which prevented the displacement of low and limited, limited income families and seniors. Initiated community workshops on implicit bias and racial justice, uh, with the support of Joy Flynn, who joins us today. So it's good to, to virtually see you again, Joy. Uh, invested in an additional half million dollars in road repair and supported coastal resiliency funding. I care deeply for our community and believe that I have the experience and education necessary to step into the role of supervisor and be responsive to the needs of the residents on day one. Uh, I'm excited to be here today. I'm looking forward to your questions. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Um, and next I will call up, uh, David. You have two minutes. And again, Jane is the, uh, timekeeper. Thank you.
My name is David Schwartz. I've lived in Santa Cruz County for over forty years. I'm a businessman, a farmer and a veteran. I've been married to an amazing and wonderful wife, Madeline, for thirty-six years. We have a multiracial family with two grown children, seven grandchildren and three great, I'm sorry, two great-grandchildren. I grew up in a military family with four brothers. I'm the middle child. I'm the negotiator of the family. We moved so often that I learned how to make friends and adapt to changing conditions quickly. My wife and I own and operate a certified organic farm. We always joke to say that we work our day jobs to support our farming habit. Farming is a great way to stay connected to Mother Earth. You learn a lot as a farmer. I'm also a veteran of the United States Air Force. I worked in a hospital as a medic in Alaska during my tour. I was on the Board of Big Brothers, Big Sisters for nine years. In that nine years, I was the president, the secretary and the treasurer in one of those years, one of each of those years. I've also been on, uh, the management of a condominium association in Maui, uh, for a number of years. I was the president for one year and I was the treasurer for six years. I do not lie. I have a dogged determination to apply my passion and my compassion to everything I do. I do not stop until I achieve my goals. I'm sixty-nine years old. I've done just about everything that a person can do. My experiences give me firsthand knowledge about many things. I want to apply my passion and skills, knowledge and imagination to the Santa Cruz County to make it better and better. Our lives, our children's lives, our great children, grandchildren's lives are all just too important to leave to the bureaucrats. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And next, um, I will call up Kim. And again, you have a two minutes for your intro.
Hi, hi, everybody. It's Kim DeSerphe from Aptos. Uh, thanks for having us tonight. Um, I grew up in the Salinas Valley. Uh, my father was killed when I was a very small child and I grew up in poverty. Um, I come from a long line of, um, public service in my family. My mom worked for two county boards of county supervisors and also Sam Farr for twenty years. Um, I owe everything to my mom. She's just wonderful. Um, I have a bachelor's degree from Humboldt State University and a master's degree from Washington University St. Louis, both in social work. Um, while at Humboldt, I took a oath of environmental and social justice. Um, I'm married. I have two beautiful kids and my husband has four children, all young adults. We live in a blended family. I've spent most of my life in healthcare as a social worker and feel really proud of the work that I've done there. I've been on the Board of Trustees for Paharo Valley for fourteen years. Um, where I've brought a lot of equity and important changes to the district, turning the district around for half the kids in this county. Um, I'm super passionate and committed to what I do. And I'm looking forward to being the next supervisor in District Two. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And last we will have, um, Bruce, um, for your two-minute intro.
Thank you, Andrew Jaffe. And thank you for taking the time to meet the candidates. I'm a forty-year resident of the second district. I married and raised my two children down college here. And I put myself through school and I'm a scientist, a professional oceanographer with a PhD. I'm an expert on climate change. I have firsthand experience with disaster response. In my scientific career, I developed analytical skills and fostered collaboration within the scientific community. I apply those skills and approach to represent you as a county supervisor. I have served as a director on the SoCal Creek Water Board for twenty-one years. I'm the current president, leading the development, long-term and cost-effective regional strategies to address the crucial issue of clean, safe water and abundant water. This is not an easy task in an environment where overdrafting the groundwater basin before I was a board member and decreased recharge now due to climate change creates seawater intrusion that threatens to clean our water supply. There's a saying, a rising tide, there's all boats. I believe in that. I was instrumental in forming an agency composed of all those who have a stake in protecting our water supply. I served as the first chair. The agency was the first in the state to develop a local plan for groundwater sustainability. I'm a founding member of the Nicene to Sea Open Space Alliance, which is, can, connects the sea to Nicene March Park. And we stopped, uh, development of twenty mega mansions and have a trail between the Rio College and Nicene March. I'll leave it as that. I believe I can find the best solutions to the many significant issues we face. And I'm ready to work hard for you and make our county government better.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, so next we have two questions from NAACP and then we'll take a few audience questions. Um, and then we'll have a two-minute summary. Um, Bruce, since you're up here, uh, why don't I ask you the first NAACP question? Uh, here goes. What steps, what steps will you take to enact the county's equity statement enacted October third of twenty twenty-three? The statement reads, equity and action in Santa Cruz County is a transformative process that embraces individuals of every status, providing unwavering support, dignity and compassion. Through this commitment, the county ensures intentional opportunities and access fostering an environment where everyone can thrive and belong.
Thank you for the question. As with many things, um, when you're on the Board of Supervisors, your priorities are shown by how you direct funding. And I would prioritize resources towards um, to foster an environment where we can thrive and belong. So this, this would take many forms. There, but it essentially, the resources would be put into into places where they foster inclusive community development and prior prioritize equal access to essential services. So, you know, everyone deserves equal economic, political and social rights and opportunities. So I planned to develop and support programs that uplift marginalized voices. And together we can go to county where residents feel safe, empowered and have equal access to opportunities regardless of the background or circumstances.
Thank you so much. Um, and next, if we can hear from uh, Kim, same question, I can reread the question as well.
Thank you. Can you reread the question for me?
Yes. I get you spotlight here. There we go. All right. What steps will you take to enact the county's equity statement enacted October third of twenty twenty-three? The statement reads, equity and action in Santa Cruz County is a transformative process that embraces individuals of every status, providing unwavering support, dignity and compassion. Through this commitment, the county ensures intentional opportunities and access fostering an environment where everyone can thrive and belong.
Thank you.
You have two minutes.
Um, the twenty twenty-three equity declaration um, is just a start of trying to bring uh, diversity, equity and inclusion to our county. Um, we, the Board of Supervisors govern governs a billion-dollar budget. Um, much of that money is earmarked for programs that are already in existence, like public health, child welfare, um, law enforcement, et cetera. So to the extent that we can hold county offices um, and departments accountable um, for the work that's being done in the county through metrics so that we know exactly how many people of color, for example, are being brought into the child welfare system, or how many people of color are being followed by public health for tuberculosis, et cetera. Um, how many people are incarcerated in our jails or people of color? Um, all of those things are meaningful and we need to look at that as a county to make sure that we can um, provide justice for all of our citizens instead of um, instead of them having to come into services that they don't, they shouldn't, and they don't really deserve or need. So I, the, it's a good start. I think the people that are doing the work are really um, community members. So being able to listen to the stakeholders, um, being able to hold um, our county accountable, bringing those metrics in. Uh, I heard somebody say before that maybe we should have a, every year we should have a report. I think that maybe every quarter, every six months, we should actually have a report in from our uh, agencies so that we can determine um, what's actually happening in our county, so that we can provide justice for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, I'd like to bring David up uh, to answer the same question. And I can read the question too again, if you'd like.
That's not necessary.
Okay, you have two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I've, I've looked into what the county is doing from where they've created this equity statement and they actually have quite a, a broad program in mind. But apparently that's not enough and I'm sure that there's plenty more that we can do. What I'd like to do would be to get more of the public involved in this. We need to have um, uh, uh, develop a, a communication channel to um, to address issues that, that people run into. We need to know where these problems exist and what kind of problems that we do have. Uh, without this kind of outreach, we'll, we'll never know what we need to do. So that's just the beginning. Public hearings um, would be very helpful for us to look at ways that, that we can make life in Santa Cruz County more inclusionary. We, we need to, uh, I, I myself, as a supervisor, would have open offices. So if you, if you have an issue, y- you can come and see me. You can call me any, anytime uh, that, that I'm available and, and, and talk about these things. We need to develop our collaboration with um, the stakeholders and, and, and the um, uh, nonprofits that are, are going to be a big help in this. We, we cannot do this alone. We need everyone's help. So you need to tell people, get involved, go to the meetings, talk to people, talk to your supervisor. Don't, don't be um, quiet about this. Tell them what's going wrong and tell them what you want. And that's the only way that we're going to move forward from where we are now to where we need to be. And let's hope we can do this sooner rather than later. Because it is not fair to people, to treat them any differently than anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, we'll have um, Kristen up to answer the same question. Um, would you like me to read the question again?
No, that, I've got it. Thank you. Uh, so I was at the Board of Supervisors meeting and spoke in favor of the equity statement when it came before the board. Um, in adopting this statement, I think we need to hold ourselves accountable for leading by example and making sure that our county is an anti-racist institution that strives for equitable outcomes in, in what we do. And in order to do this, we need to consider equity in all policies, policy decisions and consider the communities that have been historically underrepresented in government decisions and programs and policies. And to me, that means several things. Actively engaging with community groups like the NAACP, working with uh, uh, community um, groups and uh, county-led organizations, working with CARESJ, working with community leaders of color to encourage their input on policy decisions. We need to intentionally ensure that there is diverse representation on our supervisor-appointed, appointed boards and committees. And that means reaching out to underrepresented communities and asking them to apply for these positions, making it known that there is a seat at the table. We also need to carefully consider where our discretionary funds are going and who will be most impacted, both positively and negatively by those funding decisions. And then finally, it means uh, looking at the systems and structures within the county government that may have either implicit or explicit bias built in and then working to reimagine those systems and begin to address any harm uh, that they have caused.
Thank you. And if you'd like to stay spotlight, um, I can ask you our second NAACP question and I'll read it now. Should you be elected supervisor? How would you operationalize the county's declaration that racism is a public health crisis? And what would that look like? You have two minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so first, I think again, looking at how we're allocating our funding specifically during our core community grants programs for um, community groups that serve historically disadvantaged communities and ensuring that adequate funding is going uh, to those organizations. I think additionally, it would mean performing racial impact assessments. So how are our policies impacting communities of color? Uh, and part of this will include using best practices for gathering data on the social determinants of health and analyzing how public policy decisions impact those social determinants of health and health inequities generally. Um, and then again, including communities of color in these conversations in order to ensure that the voices of those that are most impacted by racism as a public health issue are part of developing the solutions, building the programs and addressing the his, uh, issue head-on. Um, and then, you know, again, I would be grateful for the opportunity to work with CARESJ in this regard specifically. I, uh, I, I think that that's a really important aspect of this is ensuring that the communities that are impacted have a voice in um, in the solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. And um, next up, I'll have uh, David come up and answer the question. I can read it again. And um, after this, we'll have a few audience questions. We have some in the chat that I think are still applicable to District Two. Um, but if you have any that are specific to District Two, if you want to start thinking about those and enter into the chat. And David, do you need me to reread the question again for you?
No, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, first of all, I want to acknowledge the um, the American Public Health Association for mu- much of my comments regards to this. Um, I, I, I've researched issues about this and wh- what I'm finding is that these declarations are being made by a number of places across the country. But the declaration is just the beginning of this. That's, that's just words. Now we need some action. Those actions should take um, uh, place in, in terms of task forces with advising politicians and um, practitioners, uh, further ways to, to gain uh, racial equity. We, we, we need to build strategic plans that have measurable goals and, and uh, ways for us to, to determine whether we're actually getting somewhere or not. Um, we need to consult with uh, the, the um, the community and, and the resources and, and, and address the systemic racism and pursue equity efforts. Um, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot that we have to do. Uh, but we've got to commit the funding to do this. We, we really um, must make an effort to do something about this. We have to identify specific activities and increase the diversity with those activities. And the only way to do that is to have a cohesive plan that we develop through the community with everyone's input. And we ask the stakeholders and, and the nonprofits that are, that are in these areas to help with that. And that's what I want to do. I look forward to reaching out and learning what people want and finding ways to get that for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next up, uh, if we can have Kim come and answer the question. And do you need to uh, reread the question for you?
Yeah, could you reread it for me?
Sure. Okay. Should you be elected supervisor? How would you operationalize the county's declaration that racism is a public health crisis? And what would that look like?
Thank you. Well, there's no disputing that racism is a public health crisis. Um, one needs to look no further than our jails to see the great number of people that have died um, in jail because of lack of detox uh, treatment. We have a lack of substance use treatment beds in our county. We had tremendous deaths due to COVID um, during the pandemic uh, because people were squeezed into um, substandard housing. Um, I serve on the Child Death Review Team uh, from Monterey County. And I, and my husband serves on the Child Death Review Team here in Santa Cruz County. We both have to hear gruesome accounts of kids that kill themselves because they just couldn't get the mental health treatment that they deserved. So prevention is meaningful in these, in the, in um, in preventing um, negative outcomes for people and children. I've spent most of my life um, fighting for the rights and social justice for kids and for people in my job as a social worker and in my job as a trustee. When I first got on the Board of the Paharo Valley Unified School District, I would get a stack about this big on kids that we were expelling out of the district and not one shred of evidence about what we did to prevent those expulsions. And I started to vote no on all of those and we started actually looking at them. We had a task force and we moved forward to try to put in preventative measures. And I'm proud to say that today we rarely expel kids out of the district. So that's the same kind of critical thinking and tenacity that I would bring to my role at the Board of Supervisors to try to make change for people in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, last up, we'll have um, Bruce answer the question. And you have two minutes. Uh, do you need me to reread the question for you?
Uh, not necessary. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Go ahead. You have two minutes.
So, actually, in the, in the declaration itself, there are recommended actions. And those include incorporating educational efforts to address and dismantle racism. Commitment, the committing to conduct all human resources, vendor selection and grant management activities with a racial equity lens. Training all elected officials and staff on workplace biases and how to mitigate them. And I maybe add a few, but one of the most important ones was um, direct the health services agencies and Human Services Department to join the, the government alliance on race and equity on behalf of the uh, County of Santa Cruz. So that a, a very important action here is starts with the, our head of, of he- Health Services Agency, uh, Gil Newell, who is no longer the head. Uh, she retired. Did a fantastic job of, of bringing about what was necessary to, not just to the declaration, but to, to start um, lessening the racism. So um, as a result, our county has lowest death rates and best health outcomes in black, Latino, Asian communities of any county in the state. So um, as a supervisor, I, I'd want to have a health officer that would uh, continue Gil's vision and continue the good work that she did.
Thank you. And Bruce, if you want to stay on, we can um, I'll have you answer the first uh, audience question. Um, I'm just gonna pick one from the chat here. Uh, this is a big topic in our county. How will you improve transportation in the county as supervisor?
Well, um, public transportation, of course, is key to that. We all get into our cars and we all drive alone. Just the, the time to get from A to B gets longer and longer. Um, so buses, I, you know, very supportive of the bus services. That's been increased with the, the wave service that's gonna kick off. And also free bus uh, passes. There's gonna be a pilot pro uh, program on that. But I, I talked with um, the Executive Director and Deputy Director of RTC about transportation and whatever we do, it's not gonna completely solve the problem. Um, but we can make inroads into it. So I would um, support public transportation to the maximum. public transportation to the maximum.
Thank you. And next, if I can have Kim um, come on and ask you the same question. How will you improve transportation in the county as supervisor?
That's the question of the year, I think. Uh, we're asked this over and over at all these forums and you know, I think there's been a lot of smart people on that Board of Supervisors who have attempted to fix this. Um, I guess I'll say that public works issues take a very, very long time to achieve. And I think what we can see now is decades-long planning and, um, being able to bring money into our county via grants has allowed us to improve um, our, uh, Highway One in terms of coming all the way down to State Park. Um, the RTC just gave the Metro thirty-four million dollars to make ridership free so that they can increase, or sorry, the fees for getting on the bus free so that they can potentially attract people onto the bus to improve ridership, to see if that takes some of the cars um, off the road. It really takes, um, what we call multimodal types of ideas. So the other, um, thing that I think has really helped is being able to telecommute for many people who are, um, working in our county. Um, and then another idea that's happening that we, that this board of super, the next board of supervisors has nothing to do with because it's all been planned for ahead of us. But is really exciting is that there'll be sort of a, not a service center, but as almost like a second headquarters for county services down in Watsonville, which will bring equity. Um, bring people the ability to get their services in Watsonville and keep people who work there, um, off the road so they won't have to commute going north. Um, I think, uh, potentially getting a trail built as soon as possible so that people can ride bikes. I was doing some walking in one of my constituency areas and um, one of the people that I talked to said, you know, I work, I'm an engineer, I work up in natural bridges. I would love to get on my bike and just ride on a, on a safe trail up to natural bridges. And you know, the truth is, I agree, we need to get that trail built right away. And if we can, um, plan for a rail and bring in the money that we'll need to support that, I'm all for that too. So there's many different ways to improve transportation in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. And next, if we can have, uh, Kristen up to answer.
Yes, thank you. So this is a, a topic that I care very much about. As I mentioned, I'm the incoming chair of the Metro and the Chair of the RTC. So I've been working on transportation and transit issues for several, uh, several years now. Um, and so there's no, I, I'm, I'm about data-driven policy decisions. And I haven't seen a single report that says this is the one thing that will solve congestion caused by single occupancy vehicle travel. The solution is to provide meaningful and worthwhile alternatives to single occupancy vehicle travel and reducing vehicle miles traveled. So, uh, the first is at Metro. Metro, uh, we recently approved a contract for purchase of sixty-seven hydrogen electric buses, the largest electric, uh, hydrogen electric bus fleet in the country. Uh, and we worked to ensure that we will have fifteen-minute headways by the end of the year. We're working in on bus and auxiliary lanes and a true bus-on-shoulder, uh, facility. We got transit signal prioritization along SoCal, so the buses will move quicker through the traffic lights. We are working towards free transit for all beginning later this year for approximately two and a half years. And when we did that with our, uh, youth riders, youth cruise free, we saw a four hundred percent increase in ridership. We're also building housing at our transit stations, which means people don't have to get in their cars to get where they're going. They've got transit right there. At RTC, we're looking at the, um, electric passenger rail. And so we just reviewed our statement of purpose and need and we have a project concept report coming in twenty twenty-four, which is very exciting. Every member of the Board of the Su- of Board of Supervisors has a seat on the RTC. And so I've already been there for three and a half, three and a half years. Um, and so I'm prepared to continue addressing these issues. And then finally, uh, we need to improve pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. We need delineated and buffered bike lanes, wider sidewalks. And our trail segments are already under construction. Some are, are near completion, some are already completed, some are in the EIR phases. So that's really excited in, in terms of the rail trail. Um, and then we've also got the pedestrian and bicyclist, uh, over crossing that we're working on, uh, on Highway One between, uh, Shana Clear and, uh, the other side of the freeways. So there's a lot of exciting things happening. And these are the kind of things that are going to address our transportation issues here in the county.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I'd like to invite David up to answer the question. And you have two minutes. Do you need me to reread the question?
No, I don't need you to read that. Um,
Okay.
I don't, I don't see me on there, but that's okay. You, you must see me, right? Okay, so i- improving transportation in I County is, is, i- is truly a challenge. We're, we're not going to get people out of their cars. Uh, the, the buses aren't being used as well as they should be. Can they be used more? Maybe. But here I have some ideas about things that we could possibly do. Why, why are we still using the old forms of bus transportation? Why don't we use something like an on-demand, small fleet of readily accessible vans to pick people up from their homes and take them to where they want to go? If we had a system, and I think we're working on this, um, but we need to work quicker, that actually got people where they, where they want to go, uh, you're going to have a lot better ridership. And maybe you would be able to actually charge them more than that. One of the ideas that I had was, uh, let's say a van pool, let's say, that goes to, uh, from Santa Cruz to, um, San Jose. A big portion of our traffic through Highway One are people that are going from South County all the way to San Jose. A train from Watsonville to Santa Cruz is not going to fix that. So if we can get two people to get together in a, in a carpool, that's going to take half the cars off the road. If we stop doing construction during the work hours, that's going to make traffic flow better. If we fix our roads, that's going to help people get where they need to go. So we have things we can do. We're just not doing them. We need to be more creative in our approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and then we will take one final audience question. And then we will allow for each candidate to have a two-minute summary statement. Um, and I'm going to ask, there's another question, uh, earlier in the chat. Um, what will you do to improve conditions in the jail? So we had someone ask earlier too about um, the, I guess, the process that's happening now to rebuild our jail here in Santa Cruz to the tune of two hundred million dollars. Um, when we're not addressing upstream problems such as mental health, housing instability down the line. And as we know, that the majority of folks that are incarcerated tend to be people of color. Um, so how will you address that as supervisor? And David, if you would like to answer this question first, since you're still on Spotlight?
Great. So, um, the, the sheriff's office is responsible for most of this stuff and they are quite autonomous. We do not have, as Board of Supervisors, a lot of responsibility in that area. So this will be a challenge for us to make these kind of changes. Now, we have identified that replacing the jails is important because our jails are in, in horrible shape and it, the living conditions are, are less than ideal. So we, we do definitely need to replace that jail, but probably not in the same place that it is. Probably in someplace where it's, um, maybe a little farther out so that, um, uh, the traffic issue is much, uh, less, uh, uh, of an impact. But we definitely need to get more help inside the jails to help people become part of the community when they get out. In order to do that, we need to have the resources that, that provide that. The county's probably not going to have the money to do that. We need to bring in help from the outside. We need to bring in other agencies to help with that. We need to get our sheriff's department to appreciate the work that needs to be done through other groups. And once we do that, we have an opportunity to do a better job with less money. So let's do that. Let's bring in people to help with this. Let's bring in the, 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 the people that do a better job than we do. And let's learn from what they can teach us. So that we can have a system that actually gets people through the system and back to a normal life as best we can. And let's do that today. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Uh, I would like to call Kristen to answer the question.
Yes, thank you. So I have, um, joined the sheriff on tours of both the main jail and the Roundtree facility. And it is a night and day difference in conditions, opportunity for rehabilitation. Roundtree looks like what we need the ma- main jail to be. There are classes, there are community gardens, there's a playground for children visiting their parents. And the main jail is, is absolutely, it's inhumane, the kind of conditions that are in there. And the, uh, the, the need for a new jail facility is a matter of, of human compassion. Um, and so there's a lot of money that, that we need for this. We need the funding solutions. Um, but we have the, the, uh, opportunity, I see, to build this new jail facility in the property that Roundtree is already on. I think that's where it should be. Um, I was on the Criminal Justice Council for two years. We looked at police policy and procedure throughout the county. It was a first-of-kind look at these policies. Um, and in that time, you know, in speaking with, uh, the sheriff and other law enforcement officials, they also acknowledged the need for a new jail facility, uh, and, and that it needs to look more like Roundtree because it's just an absolute, um, just so polarizing the difference between what is offered for rehabilitation in Roundtree as opposed to what is off- offered in the main jail. And so, you know, my solution, uh, what I want to work towards is, uh, looking towards funding for us to build this new facility. And then looking to get the kinds of programs and opportunities within that new facility that we're already seeing in Roundtree that the main jail just absolutely does not have.
Thank you so much. Um, if I could have Kim come and answer the question, please. You have, um, two minutes.
Thank you. Well, I think that, um, preventing people from going to jail in the first place um, is really important. So the investment in education, um, cannot be underlined enough. Uh, PVUSD actually, um, supplies the classes at Roundtree to help people earn their GED and, uh, high school diplomas to have a better life. Um, so I'd like to invest more in upfront prevention so that we don't have people going into the, into our jail system to begin with. And that includes excellent mental health. We've got people that are showing signs of mental health in their teen years. Um, we have people that in their early twenties develop symptoms. And, um, the current system that we have now for behavioral health to sort of mitigate and prevent mental health from getting worse is horrible. I have a young man right now sitting in my ER that has been there for the last three days and there are no behavioral health beds anywhere in the entire Bay Area for him. So tomorrow we'll have to put him on an extension. And we can keep him for another seventeen days in the hospital. But guess what? The hospital doesn't get paid. So every day we have to pay a psychiatrist, we have to pay social workers, we have to pay sitters, CNAs to sit with him so that he doesn't hurt himself. And the hospital doesn't get a single cent for him being there. So, uh, this, uh, this is a disaster. So to prevent any of that from happening, we could give people the proper services and attention that they need early and prevent them from ever going homeless in the first place and having to commit crimes. Uh, the second thing that I would do in the jails is I would, um, fire the contractor Wellspring. Um, I've had multiple people come in to my hospital who have not had the proper medical care and later died as a result of, um, the assessments and the care that Wellspring gives. So I would not want them, um, in the jail any further. Um,
And I think you're at time. Thank you.
Oh, I'm at time. Okay, that's enough. Thank you. Prevention is the key.
Yes, agreed. Okay. And last, I'll invite Bruce up to answer the question as well.
The other candidate said, I have touched on some of the things I was going to touch upon. But one thing they haven't talked about is how when somebody comes into the jail system and they've been using drugs, how inhumane the, the current practices are for getting them off those drugs. So, um, that is one thing that I think should change. And I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask, um, one last, uh, audience question. Um, and you'll have two minutes to respond and then we'll move, um, in another round to summary. And I'm going to read a question submitted by Joy. Dr. Ibram X. Kendi says, "It's not enough to not be racist. We must be anti-racist." What does it mean to you to be anti-racist? And what will you do to make Santa Cruz County uphold anti-racism? Um, Bruce, if you want to go first, since you're already still on screen?
I had taken myself off, but I'll go back on.
Okay.
But, yeah, so what would I do as a supervisor? I, I think it all starts with having the, the attitude that everybody is equal. And by that, I mean, that, that's self-explanatory. So how do you, how do you enact that? The way that you enact it is that you listen to everybody. You give, you have, be, become accessible to everybody. Uh, I've where I didn't become supervisor, I would have open hours in all parts of the county so that you have equal access. And then when it comes to allocating resources, you allocate on the basis of need, not on the basis of race. So it's very basic stuff. I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, I'd like to invite David up to answer the question. And I'm happy to repeat the question as well if you need.
No, that, that's not necessary.
Okay.
So racism to me is a form of hatred. If we allow people to hate, then we allow them to be racist. The best thing that we can do here is to set examples. I, I don't, I don't look at anyone with hatred in my eye. I look at people, no matter what they are, as my brothers, my sisters, humans on the face of this earth. And we're all here. We're all here for only a short period of time. So to say we're anti-racist is to say that we're anti-hatred. And that we will not allow anyone who works for the county or anyone who works with the county to hate somebody for any reason. We've got to make it clear that everyone is part of the solution here. Everyone is part of everything that we do. If we hire people, maybe what we should do is instead of having them come in, in person, in an interview, that we create an environment where we don't know their age, we don't know their sex, we don't know their color, we don't know their religion. We just ask them questions and we listen to the answers and we write that down. And we take them for what they present to us instead of their looks or their color or what have you. And then we make our choices based on that. We've got to be able to get us all to where we need to be, where we all love each other and we can all work together. And that's, that's a challenge of the ages. We've been at this for hundreds of years. And that's, that's a challenge of the ages. We've been at this for hundreds of years and let's make it work.
Thank you. And I will now invite, uh, Kim up to respond.
Can you read the question again for me?
Sure. Dr. Ibram X Kendi says, "It's not enough to not be racist. We must be anti-racist." What does it mean to be anti-racist and what will you do to help make Santa Cruz County uphold anti-racism?
Thank you. Well, I think one of the first things that anybody could do to be anti-racist is to admit that they have some type of privilege if they do. So I'm a white woman. I happen to be Jewish. Uh, that's sort of, um, something that has informed, um, my life, um, and everything that I do for social justice. Um, but I am a privileged person. I have a home. Um, I have a wonderful job that I make a good living at. Um, and so I have privilege compared to other people. So I think that is the first thing. The second thing is in terms of the county's hiring, we really need to have people, um, among of the ranks that are people of color, people that speak different languages, people that are other-abled, um, and people that are queer. We need a variety of people sitting at the table um, to inform, uh, policy and choices that the county makes. And I think that's, uh, important and it's a metric that we can hold to. Uh, similarly, on the Board of Supervisors, there's been only men for the last 12 years. The last woman was elected in, um, 16 years ago. And so it's time for a woman to be elected to the Board of Supervisors and hopefully many women. We've got two great women here today who are well-prepared and well-trained. And so I think, I think that would be a start. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to invite Kristen up to respond to the question.
Thank you. So first, uh, How to Be an Anti-Racist was a great, a great book. Um, and being anti-racist in the way that I see this question, this is about looking at the policies you're making, the policies that we can adjust. And it's not just a question of, is this policy hurting anyone? But is this policy actively uplifting those who have been historically unheard, underrepresented, oppressed, and quite frankly, unwelcome? And this involves considering multiple, multiple forms of oppression and the intersectionality of race and gender, sexuality, socio- not socioeconomic status, whether one is able-bodied. And it means going into communities and asking for their input. Uh, we will never hear the voices of those who do not feel safe in government spaces because of language barriers, historical racism, immigration status. And so being anti-racist means creating a safe space for them, welcoming and welcoming them into it, asking them to come into that space rather than expecting them to come to us when we have historically not provided a safe space for them to be. And I'll give two examples if I have time. I'm sorry, I can't, oh, there you are, okay, the timer. Um, so the first example is in Capitola, we created a police chief's advisory council, for people in the community to help address, uh, new policies, look at the policies we have. And it, when it first came to us on council, it was almost entirely white men. And we said, absolutely not. And we were told, well, these are the people who applied. And we said, no, go back, recruit community members of color, recruit bilingual speakers. We need these voices. You need to go into their communities and ask them to be here. And they did. The second example I wanna give is when I was chair, co-chair of the Board of the Community Action Board, my co-chair and I decided that in any presentations we gave on behalf of the board, rather than things being said first in English and then translated into Spanish, they would always be said in Spanish first and then translated into English so that Spanish-speaking community members knew that they did not always have to wait for someone to tell them what was being said, that it mattered that what we were saying was heard by them first and foremost also. And so these are just some examples of, I think, how we can bring, uh, how we cannot just be not racist, but we can work to be anti-racist.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Uh, yeah, and making that distinction, I think, is incredibly important when you're making policies and uplifting communities that are most impacted by long-term systemic issues. Um, so I wanna invite each candidate up to make a two-minute closing statement. I will start with, uh, I guess Kristen, since you're still spotlight. If you wanna give a two-minute closing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So thank you all again for the opportunity to hear your thoughts and to share mine. Uh, there are big challenges ahead in the county and we need leaders who have experience in the very issues that the Board of Supervisors handle as well as the relationships and understanding of the systems, both societal systems and government systems. Um, and to be able to look at those systems and how they're creating problems and how to work within them to solve those problems. I would consider it an honor to serve the community on the Board of Supervisor and I hope that I've inspired the belief that I am the candidate who is prepared to step into this role and hit the ground running. And many in our community would agree that that's the case. I've been endorsed by every mayor and vice mayor in the county, along with the majority of council members, Monterey Bay Central Labor Council, Paharo Valley Caesar Chavez Democratic Club, Democratic Women's Club, and the Supervisors, Justin Cummings and Felipe Hernandez. But I'm not taking anything for granted. I would be honored to become the D2 Supervisor and will work hard for the people of District Two and the county as a whole. Please don't reach, uh, please don't hesitate to reach out to me at any time. Uh, my website is votekristenbrown.com. You can call me. I'll put my phone number in the chat, email me. I would love to talk more about how we can make our county the best place it can possibly be for every single resident. And again, thank you so much for the time this evening.
Thank you so much, Kristen. Um, next I wanna invite, uh, Bruce up. We're closing summary for two minutes.
Sorry, just getting, uh, things set up. So I'm not gonna take a full two minutes. The night is long. My record is a public servant and it's a continuation of what I did for my work, where I chose to work, um, in government and get paid less. Really defines me. My 21 years on the Sochaux Creek Water Board was my leadership on, say, um, saving, uh, open space in our, in our county. Show my leadership. My, uh, attitude is one that's thoughtful, uh, pragmatic, transparent. I I value collaboration. Um, this is evidenced by, um, working together with all parties involved with water in the county and forming, forming instrumental in forming the Santa Cruz Mid-County Groundwater Agency. So, if um, the, the cap Board of Supervisors is just the incremental thing where the next supervisor takes over, um, gets the baton from the last supervisor and you stay on the same course, I'm not the candidate for that. If you want change, if you want to have, um, policies that are non-incremental but at quantum leap, then I'm the person that you want. Thank you for, for, uh, putting on this forum. And it's been good to getting to know what your issues are. And I hope you know a little more about me now.
Thank you, Bruce. Um, next I'd like to invite, um, David up to give your two-minute closing summary.
I would like to thank everyone for inviting me to the forum and for all those, those who have attended. You've heard some of what I've had to say and I hope there's some common ground between us. If you go to my website, voteshwarts.com, "for" is spelled out F-O-R. You can read more about me. I'm not a politician or a lifelong bureaucrat. I'm not going to trade my success here for another office in a few more years. You will have my full attention, my full experience, all of my imagination and everything working for you. I believe in commitment. When I say I'm going to do something, by God, I'll do it. Albert Einstein famously said, "We cannot solve our problems with the same thinking that created them." He also said, "Imagination is more important than knowledge." I have a vivid imagination. I look at problems from many different ways. I want to apply everything in my being to find and correct the problems facing our county. I ask for your vote. I ask for your faith in me. Give me the chance to show you what I can do. I have a different approach. Please tell your relatives, your friends, your neighbors about me. We must work together for a more promising future. I am your best choice. Vote for me, March 5th, and I will make you proud. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if Kim would like to come and give your two-minute closing statement?
Thank you. Well, again, I'm a resident of, um, Aptos Hills for the last 26 years. I'm a mom of six kids. I've been a foster parent. I'm a licensed clinical social worker with two advanced accreditations from a top school in the nation. I did an internship at the Administration on Aging, um, where I helped to reauthorize the Older Americans Act and senior issues are very important to me as a result. I've worked in child welfare as a CPS social worker doing sex crimes investigations and um, in two different counties. I've, uh, worked at Public Health. Um, most of my career has been in hospitals, at hospice of Santa Cruz County and in clinics. I'm currently a healthcare manager and deeply understand social determinants of health, how those affect people and how to help people deeply. I've housed multiple people, upwards of 30 people um, on my own. And I've been through the process of getting a Section 8 voucher and trying to help them find housing. So I'm very, very familiar with all of the barriers that are put up in people's ways to access entitlements that they deserve. I deeply understand how to help people. I'm endorsed by 250 residents of District Two, actually more than 250, by Planned Parenthood, by the trades and the sheet metal workers, and also by former supervisor Ellen Peary. Um, I look forward to serving all people in the district. Actually, all people, not just in District Two, but in the whole county. Um, as I have for 14 years on the Paharo Valley Unified School District. I'm proud of my record there and I've helped to turn the district around. Thanks for your time tonight and, um, I'll see you soon. Take care.
Thank you to all the candidates that joined us this evening. Um, I know we're a little over times. We appreciate it. We know the campaign trail is long, but you're almost there. Just a month left. I don't know if that's terrifying or not, but I'm excited. So, uh, I'll turn over to Elaine. Um, President Johnson, do you have some closing statements for us?
Yes, I wanna thank everybody for coming out this evening and wish you all the very best on your journeys these next four weeks. Always remember you gotta continue to take care of yourselves, um, during this process. Um, and we, you know, on the half of the NAACP, uh, we look forward to working together, um, with whoever gets, um, ends up winning the election. But no matter who wins or quote-unquote don't win, let's stay in partnership because that's what it's about. It's about being in partnership. So all the very best to you all. Have a good evening. Thank you.